to Order. May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Peck.
Present.
Mayor Protim Hadago-Ferring.
Here.
Councilmembers Martin.
Here.
McCoy.
Present.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Garber.
Here.
Krist.
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Let's stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As a reminder, the live stream of this meeting can be viewed at the city's YouTube channel. It can be viewed at the longmontpublicmedia.org/watch or on Comcast Channels 8 or 880. Anyone wishing to speak at first call, public invited to be heard, will need to add his or her name to the list outside the council chambers. Only those on the list will be invited to speak at the first public invited to be heard. Each speaker is limited to three minutes, and we would like your name and address. Is there, are there any councilors who would like to direct the city manager to add agenda items to other agendas, future agendas?
Yes.
Counselor Krist.
I? No.
Yeah, one gone.
I would like to add an agenda item regarding HOAs. I would like to have a better understanding of new developments and why HOAs are mandated for new developments. I've been on the council for eight weeks, and I've had at least eight concerns about HOAs from neighborhoods. And I also noticed that was a topic at the coffee with council. So I would just like to understand better what we're expecting in terms of having HOAs in new developments. And do I need to make a motion for that?
Sure.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to, for the staff to bring forward information about HOAs.
I'll second, okay.
So, counter Krist, second or third? That's been made. That motion to have an agenda item on HOAs was made by Counselor Chris, seconded by Counselor Hadago-Ferring.
Everybody.
Okay. So, Counselor Krist, I would like to ask you, do you just want to leave it up to the city manager as to when an appropriate time for that is?
Could we do it maybe on the 24th of February? Does that agenda look good?
Based on our schedules, that's probably a little too quick to pull it together. I think if you could let us bring it as soon as possible.
Well, I think the, the next date in March is, is vacated for NLC, but maybe after that, the 13th of March, would that be a possibility?
That's NLC.
Oh, that's NLC, so it would be the 6th or the...
Let me, let me look at the calendar really quick.
Or the 20th, maybe.
The 20th, we're going to have a pre-session.
Um...
Pre-session, it's a good topic.
Yeah, it's a good session for, for a pre-session, it could be on the 20th end of March.
I think the 5th may be doable. We have a regular session. I'll need to look at that agenda.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, are you wanting, I guess part of what I'm trying to, are you wanting us to go over the code provisions in terms of the establishment of HOAs and why that's in there? Or...
I would like to know what we hope to accomplish by having HOAs in new developments. Just because we seem to be having a lot of concerns coming forward regarding HOAs.
I think we can shoot for the 5th. Let me look at that agenda.
And Sandy, I'm going to add a little bit, perhaps the state statute as well on HOAs.
And there's, there's been some state involvement in the last couple of years as well, so that would be helpful to have it. Please, Sandy.
Yeah, let me look at the 5th real quick. I think if staff can put it together, there's room on the 5th. I think some of it's going to be historical, so we're going to have to dig into it because I'm not sure that most of us were here when that was promulgated. And so, but yeah, let us shoot for the 5th.
Okay.
And if you need more time, just let us know.
We'll let you know.
Okay, great, thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, let's vote. And that carries unanimously. Counselor Martin.
Um, yes, I have a resolution from the Sustainability Advisory Board regarding their policy on composting. It does, and we would like to bring that resolution before council. I would, I would move that the Sustainability Advisory Board's agenda or resolution on, on composting be considered by the council at some future date.
I'll second that. So our Counselor Martin wants to bring forth a resolution on composting that the Sustainability Board has put together, and I seconded that. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. That passes unanimously. So, um, we are now at public invited to be heard. I, I took a while saying that because I thought we went through that first part awfully fast. We can't be at public invited to be heard already. But before we do that, we are going to, no, let's, we're going to do public invited to be heard. Remember that you have three minutes, and we'd like your name and address. And don't forget to turn on the microphone. The first person is Shaquille Delal.
Is that on?
Yes, it is.
Great. Shaquille Delal, 219 Francis Street. Mayor and members of council, I'm here today speaking in favor of council endorsing HB 241152. The cost of housing is a choice, and today council has the opportunity to vote to reduce the cost of housing, not just in the city of Longmont, but across the entire front range. ADUs are a type of desirable home that could make living in Longmont attainable to young families, teachers, city employees, and the many other people who make this city work but who cannot currently afford to live within city limits. They can also be a place for a couple growing older to move into, perhaps behind the home they raise their kids in, so that they can downsize into something more manageable without having to give up their neighbors. It's exactly what Longmont needs. With respect to this bill, the city's Legislative Affairs webpage says, quote, "While we share the state's goal of expanding housing options, this bill encroaches on traditional land use and zoning authority of home rule municipalities." With all due respect to the city staff, I believe that this analysis is wrong. Government with a capital G has several functions, one of the most important of which is to solve problems of collective action. There is a lot that Longmont can do to lower the cost of housing within its borders, but without state-level action that gets all the cities around us to take action as well, our success will be limited. The structure of the bill does not infringe on a city's right to home rule. City council's action plan for how, right, let me rephrase that. The structure of this bill does not infringe on this city's right to home rule. City council's action plan for housing affordability from last year, from last year's city council retreat specifically included changes to Longmont's ADU rules that would comply with almost everything in this bill. By voting to endorse, council can put some points on the scoreboard going into this year's retreat. And if the state is going to do something that we were going to do anyway and make it so that other cities can't mooch off of Longmont's hard work to lower the cost of housing, that seems like a win all around. I believe that opposing this bill is going to make fixing Longmont's cost of housing even harder. Last week at the city council open forum, several of you told me how eager you were to see what the state wanted to do to lower the cost of housing. Well, here it is. Let's get serious.
Thank you, Shaquille. Mary Lynn.
My name is Mary Lynn, and I live on Atwood Street on the historic east side. So I wanted to thank council for agreeing that a discussion of the options and ways to eliminate the food, specifically the grocery tax, the tax on groceries, would be put on a future agenda, and I'm here to ask when that will be and how we will know that that's happening. I don't, I don't understand that part of the process, and I want to make sure that the folks who are interested are prepared and that this is going to happen in a timely manner, hopefully earlier in first quarter, because I understand building budgets, having done that for years in my own businesses and other folks' businesses. So is, where would I find that information?
We don't really respond to public invited to be heard, but we do have people in the back there that can answer that question for you.
In the back of the?
Behind you.
Okay.
Sandy Cedar and Becky Doyle are both raising their hands.
Okay.
I'll go. Okay.
And another question, it also was not clear, and this is on behalf of the issue that my husband brought up, of food sovereignty from the angle of sustainable agriculture. It's also not clear what the process is for putting together a task force around that. I certainly didn't leave with an, a clear understanding of that, and again, I understand that you don't respond directly to questions, but how can that question be answered as well?
Behind you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Dan Sorrels.
Good evening, councilors and Mayor Peck. My name is Dan Sorrels, and I live at 328 Grant Street. And I'm here to ask the city council to support the passage of HB 241152, which will allow ADUs as an accessory use to single-family detached houses. Last week at the open forum, I brought up the dire need for more housing in Longmont, particularly affordable and attainable housing. The ability to add ADUs on single-family lots would go a long way toward lessening this shortage. And you might be surprised how long ADUs have been around and how beneficial they are. The English Carriage Houses dating back to the 1700s were essentially ADUs. And anyone familiar with Happy Days knows that Fonzie's Garage Apartment was an ADU, so you know they're cool. But when my wife was a single mother, raising her then 11-year-old son, they lived in an ADU she rented from a client in Boulder County. And because it was the essence of affordability, she was able to save enough money to buy a townhouse right here in Longmont. So many people, people who work here in Longmont and would love to live in this community are priced out because of the lack of affordable housing. By coming out in support of this bill, Longmont shows itself to be a true leader willing to adopt creative solutions to solve the chronic lack of affordable housing. If this bill passes, Longmont wins, and so does every community in the state. We will be able to increase the supply of housing instead of outsourcing the housing of our labor force to the surrounding sprawl of Frederick, Erie, and Firestone. The city loses very little control. The bill as written maintains administrative reviews and precludes the city of, and would not preclude the city of Longmont from building on this foundation while at the same time addressing other obstacles such as overly restrictive and inflexible zoning and land use codes. It's not like people would suddenly tape a bunch of cardboard boxes together and call it an ADU. This would be serious housing and would address a serious problem. This is a win-win, and I trust you and the council will see your way supporting this bill that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Taylor Wicklund.
My name's Taylor Wicklund. I live at 1704 Short Place. I am here to also request that the council give support to HB 241152 and a vote tonight. As I hope you have read, the House bill will start to allow the infill that Longmont needs and that many other communities around the state need as well. The bill will circumvent the arbitrary control of homeowner associations by freeing up the housing market... to create more supply of housing to allow ADUs. This bill will not end home rule for Longmont, as we need the state to act on the control of HOAs and the housing supply. Longmont cannot do this alone. After this bill passes, Longmont can continue to lead by example from our envisionary comprehensive plan and continue to think outside-the-box ideas of more ways to increase housing supply, such as creating incentives to build affordable, attainable ADUs, and reviewing design standards that truly restrict what we can and cannot build. Overall, the House bill will bring a greater value to the present city ordinances on housing and allow Longmont to continue to do the hard work on this issue. Let Longmont lead by example to the other front-range communities and encourage the state to act to create the housing supply we need and eliminate the restrictions HOAs create on the marketplace. I'll end with a quote from council's very own vision. Longmont is the world's greatest village, where children are the most fortunate to be born and raised, older adults are supported through their entire life journey, and all people have access to food, shelter, and the opportunity to thrive and feel they belong. This bill is an important step towards that vision. Support HB 241152. Thank you.
Thank you, Taylor. Gary Hodges.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Gary Hodges. I live at 2148 Stewart Street. So this'll follow up from a week ago when I spoke on energy. During that talk, I stated that globally, wind and solar makes up 3% of our global energy use, and Council Member Martin disagreed with that, or she had read somewhere else. So I got in touch with an energy expert I know, and actually the gentleman that I got the, the data from. And he said that to be fair and accurate, that 3% was almost 3.5 when he created the plot. That was a few years ago. He said now it's pushing 4%. But we're really talking about supplying primary energy, not electricity. And he said, his words said that's where the conversion assumptions get hinky, because it depends on where your solar panel is. I mean, if it's in Arizona, you get more than if it's in North Dakota, et cetera, where the wind turbine is. But really what you want to think about is, if you got rid of all the wind and solar, how much hydrocarbon combustion would it take to replace that? And there's what that, that's what that number is talking about. And you don't have to believe me, you don't have to believe that gentleman. You just search for yourself something like global energy consumption by source. You'll find our world of data, other sources. There's a bunch of them out there. These things range from like 3% to 5%. But I don't want to get bogged down in those numbers because the real, the reality is that wind and solar is not green, it's not renewable. It's because of the immense mining and refining that is required to put in these energy machines, PV, wind turbines and such. And this was the January, oh, well, you know what that is. To progress toward 100% renewable energy goal by 2030, we're not going to reach that. I think everybody here knows that. And I think we need to quit using that terminology because people are going to start expecting it. And wind and solar isn't even going to reduce, reduce it by anything. And we just need honesty and truthfulness. And again, I said last week, I don't celebrate this. I just want people to understand. So to be a little funny and sarcastic, maybe instead we could say like adding more wind and solar into our energy mix will not appreciably decrease CO2 emissions and will have zero impact on climate change. But we're going to increase your electricity anyway. And I think if people really understood what was there, they might have another feeling on it. There's more I want to say, but adaption and resiliency, you're going to see more on that because that just means people are understanding this is not possible. I'm going to spend the last 30 minutes to speak as a single-family homeowner, and I'm in support of the zoning as it is. I don't like the idea of changing the ground rules. We buy our homes, for most people, it's the single largest purchase we make. If you change the zoning midstream, it's changing the ground rules by which we all made these purchases. So I would stand in, not in support of the House bill that these gentlemen have just discussed. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Dwayne Lees.
Members of the council, my name is Dwayne Lees. I live at 2686 Pearl Howlett Road. I'm here to talk to you about ideas about what's going on with performance spaces at the Longmont Museum. They are adding a brand-new kind of a small little performance area to the north of, or not the north, to the south of the building, which will be next to the roadway. And across the street are houses. I think that that would be much better placed on the north side of the building, which would then give a sound barrier of the building itself. I think that there's been problems with the Roosevelt Park area pavilion because of sound ordinance or sound problems with the neighbors. That's one thing. This is a little Johnny come lately because they're already in the process of building it. So, so this is just a comment more than anything else. But I do think that that's something that you need to be very thoughtful about, that sort of thing. The other thing that I think would be a really good way to go with the Stewart Auditorium is the pricing structure for the use of that auditorium is, is monolithic and, and is always consistently the same at being $1,200 to rent it. It would be much better if you sold tickets and then charged by the number of people who came. The purpose of that auditorium, and the purpose of any auditorium, is to use it. And if you have an audience that is like, let's say, 50 people or 100 people, it makes it very, very difficult to be able to afford a $1,200 price tag plus your, your tech support and, and whatnot. So if they sold the tickets, and this is something that's done by the Union Colony Center in Greeley, and then charge by the number of tickets that are sold for the auditorium itself, this would make it more accessible to a lot more people. And the whole idea is to, is to serve the community with this particular facility. Thank you very much.
Mayor, council, my name's Lance Whitaker. I live at 1750 Collier Street. A lot on the agenda day, so I'm probably gonna take up all three minutes. Today is National Chopstick Day. It is also National Frozen Yogurt Day, National Lamb Duck Day. So that's your national days. I have something in my pocket again this week. All right. To give you a clue, you have to understand the difference between marijuana versus hemp. Marijuana is your cute little fuzzy toy poodle. He's cute, he's fuzzy, he's nice to cuddle with, he's warm, whatever. And hemp is your wolfhound. He's mean, he's aggressive, he's keep him outside kind of dog. Well, they're both cute and fuzzy in their own little way. They're both dogs. Hemp and marijuana are both the same plant. And do you know the name of the plant? Cannabis. So you have any clue on what's in my pocket? Piece of cannabis. Name comes from cannabis. I'd also like to make a comment on the food tax. I'd like to see you guys, if you could try to reallocate a food tax, and I know mayor wanted some solutions to that, and maybe making a parking lot tax to the Walmarts and the Costcos and the King Supers. We spent a lot of money on law enforcement in those park, or parking lots. We put a lot of equipment in those parking lots. We paid for a lot of that equipment. Maybe we can put the food tax also on their bu, um, books. And then Isaac Walton Park. While you guys have your retreat in Isaac Walton Clubhouse this weekend, I would like you guys to look north and realize that that little bond farm that's there and is a big flood sponge for the creek that's there. And not to build the bond farm there and maybe make it part of Isaac Walton Park. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you, Lance. Denise Swinson? I think I pronounced that correct. Jacob Arment.
Hello, council, council. I'm Jacob Bend. I live at 110 Main. Today, I just want, kind of wanted to speak on the House Bill 241152. The way I see it, Longmont can only develop a couple ways. It can develop out, eating more and more of the farmland that we have around our community that gives us such a unique identity. It can develop up by redeveloping neighborhoods we currently have with apartment complexes and whatnot. Or it can develop denser. And I think that ADUs are the only way that we can develop a denser Longmont and Longmont with more housing stock while not destroying the neighborhoods that make this town so lovely. So, yeah. The other great thing about this legislation is it provides funding mechanisms and financing mechanisms for people looking to develop these ADUs, which I think is very necessary. And with more resources, state resources, than I think Longmont City could provide with our own independent legislation. Yeah, I think that's all I have to say on ADUs. So I urge council to support the 1152 and the state legislation on building ADUs. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else on this list, I'm gonna close public, first call public invited to be heard. Thank you, everyone. We now have a special report, and it's, I'm sorry, it's a proclamation. And it's a proclamation designating February 11th through the 17th, 2024, as Future Business Leaders of America Week in Longmont, Colorado. Whereas Future Business Leaders of America Incorporated, FBLA, is a nonprofit educational organization whose first chapter was established in Johnson City, Tennessee, in 1942, and Iowa became FBLA's first state chapter in 1947. And whereas Longmont High School officially chartered its FBLA local chapter on December 4th, 1974. And whereas FBLA includes more than 20,000 members and advisors in 4,600 chapters nationwide in middle schools, high schools, colleges, universities, career and technical schools, and private business schools. And whereas FBLA is a professional business organization dedicated to bringing business and education together in a positive working relationship through many innovative leadership and career development programs. And whereas FBLA members perform community service activities and strive to build a student's understanding of the realities of the modern business world. And whereas FBLA reaches middle school, high school, and college student, excuse me, basic business and leadership principles and assists them in the transition from school to work. Now therefore, I, Joan Peck, Mayor, by virtue of the authority vested in me in the city council of the city of Longmont, do hereby proclaim the week of February 11th through the 17th, 2024, as Future Business Leaders of America Week in Longmont, Colorado. Who are, is going to come up and accept this award? Are you Yuno? Do you want to say a few words, Yuno?
For sure.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Yuno Ide. Good evening, council and Mayor Peck. I would like to thank you for this proclamation. On behalf of our FBLA program, here are some of our officers, and I'm your president of the Longmont High School chapter. And I did want to say a few words. Our FBLA chapter is, has more than 300 members in it, and we are very proud of that. And we compete in many events, and we prepare our students to be future business leaders. And I am very proud to say that our Longmont City is proclaiming February 11th through 17th, 2024, as FBLA Week. So thank you.
Thank you, Yuno. Do you all want to picture your beautiful faces in a photograph?
Sure.
Come on up then. Thank you, guys, so much for recognizing us. Oh, of course. Counselor McCoy would like a few words?
Well, I want to thank you. As the Board Director for District 2 for Future Business Colorado, Future Business Leaders of America, I couldn't be more proud of the largest chapter in the state of Colorado with 309 students at Longmont High. And we couldn't have had that conference there this past weekend without all the judges that were helping and without all the teachers, advisors, and the students that were committed to making sure that that was a great conference. Thank you, Longmont High. You did a wonderful job.
Ditto. So now we have our study session items. The first one is on the Affordable Housing Incentives Review. And I would like Molly O'Donnell to invite her up to the podium. And a few others.
Mayor, members of council, Molly O'Donnell, Housing Director for the city. I'm going to actually turn it over to our consultant, Molly Fitzpatrick. You last saw her in July of last year to go over our inclusionary housing policy and some recommendations there that we've since worked around, worked on with your support and implemented at your direction. So Molly's gonna join us today to talk about the next phase of our studies using our Innovative Housing Planning Grant through the state.
Thank you, Molly. Good evening, Mayor and council. Appreciate having you back, or you having me back. I'm glad to be back and talk a little bit more about this. So when I was here in July, we talked through some potential revisions to the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, focusing on kind of cleaning up some of the requirements and, and making those more efficient. Now we're coming back with affordable housing incentives. So these incentives are primarily looking at what kind of zoning and process variances and perks, essentially, can you give to developers who are bringing the community benefit of affordable housing to your community? That means it, it could be folks that are just building those inclusion-
And, uh, I would like Molly O'Donnell to invite her up to the podium. And a few others.
Mayor, Members of Council, Molly O'Donnell, Housing Director for the city. Um, I'm going to actually turn it over to our consultant, Molly Fitzpatrick. You last saw her in July of last year to go over our inclusionary housing policy and some recommendations there that we've since, um, worked around, worked on with your support and implemented at your direction. So Molly's going to join us today to talk about the next phase of our studies using our, um, Innovative Housing Planning Grant through the state.
Thank you, Molly. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Appreciate having you back, or you having me back. I'm glad to be back and talk a little bit more about this. So when I was here in July, we talked through some potential revisions to the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, focusing on kind of cleaning up some of the requirements and, and making those more efficient. Now we're coming back with, uh, Affordable Housing Incentives. So these incentives are primarily looking at what kind of zoning and process, uh, variances and perks essentially can you give to developers who are bringing the community benefit of affordable housing to your community? That means, uh, it, it could be folks that are just building those inclusionary units as opposed to paying the fee. Or it could also include, um, affordable housing that's kind of large scale, like low-income housing tax credits or Habitat for Humanity and those types of projects. So I'm going to talk through, um, kind of some of our recommendations around, uh, the Affordable Housing Incentive Program. But just to recap, for those that aren't familiar, this is what your existing program looks like. That's what's on the screen right now. You do have affordable incentives already in place for these types of units. Um, we call kind of the, this first tier, the baseline incentives. Those are available to any developer that chooses to build the, um, the inclusionary housing units. So if they're building affordable units in compliance with your Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, they qualify for these baseline incentives. If they're paying the fee in lieu, they don't qualify for those. So those baseline incentives are a density bonus. That's measured as dwelling units per acre. A lot size or width reduction for single-family and townhome projects. There's also a one-story height bonus for multifamily projects. There's reduced parking just on the affordable units in particular within that project. And then there's also reduced development standards. For projects that go above and beyond the inclusionary housing requirement. So think now like low-income housing tax credit projects that are majority affordable, um, Habitat for Humanity or Elevation Community Land Trust, those types. They also are eligible for enhanced incentives under your current program. That basically means financial incentives for the most part. So either fee waivers or fee deferrals so they can pay them later, um, or different subsidies, um, that might be available, uh, for water. So as we get into, um, some of our recommendations, I'll just kind of acknowledge kind of our process in going through, like, how do we look at these? How do we evaluate what incentives might make sense? And where you might want to change them? And there's kind of three components to that analysis that we do. Number one is talking to developers and saying, what would make your life easier? To build affordable units. How can we get more of these on the ground? What do you want to see in terms of incentives or different development options? The second way is we do what's called a feasibility analysis. That really looks at the nuts and bolts of the financials of different, they're called pro formas, for what does it cost to build a development? And when we change some of those inputs, how does that impact the bottom line? So that's kind of a quantitative analysis of what is kind of the financial benefit of some of these incentives. And then the third kind of way that we do this is a little bit more qualitative. And it really is just us doing a, a more in-depth review of what incentives you have and what, um, is possible, talking to planning staff about what's going well within these. What are you hearing developers asking for? And then comparing, um, kind of your incentive package and different opportunities with best practices throughout the country, best practices in the industry, and our experience working in other communities on this issue as well. So first I'll share with you what we heard kind of from that first component, which is from stakeholders and developers that we spoke to as part of this process. Um, this like kind of recaps some of that feedback. But I want to start with, uh, what I think is maybe the most important point out of this is that most developers we talked to were pretty happy with the, um, both the process and what they were building in Longmont. They basically said, look, I'm, Longmont is letting me build the type of units that I think are in line with market demand. And I'm pretty much getting to build the things that I think are needed in Longmont. Um, and that, when we're talking about that, we're talking about structure types. Can you build townhomes where you want to? Are you building in the lot sizes that you want? Those types of things. So developers broadly were pretty favorable. And I think that's a really important point because the way incentives work is you're giving developers something they don't have that they want. Sometimes that's density, sometimes that's height, sometimes that's lot size. And if your, um, if your current code is really well-aligned with the market, then incentives don't work as well. But that's not a bad thing. So I, I would just take that as a compliment to your zoning code. The developers are saying, hey, I can either negotiate kind of on a, a large scale. If I'm doing a big development, I'm able to work with planning staff, um, and the city to kind of get that where I need it to be. Um, and, and if I, if I'm just building in a time line, I'm pretty much getting it. So I just want to kind of complement that and also acknowledge that when folks, when developers are not necessarily taking advantage of the incentives that you offer, sometimes it means the incentives are broken, but sometimes it means your land use code is working. And so it, it doesn't always mean like, oh, we're not doing this right. It, it means you're not holding your good zoning hostage to this other outcome. Does that make sense? So despite them saying, yeah, it's great. They of course did have some things that they would love for you to do as well. So, uh, when we talked to them, uh, you know, some of the, the key incentives that came up kind of over and over were, we'd love lower parking ratios. Um, they'd rather build what they think the market wants rather than what the city is telling them to build to in terms of number of parking spaces per unit. Um, there was some, uh, developers that wanted moderate density increases. So they weren't looking for massive, massively different density, but a little bit here and there. Um, most developers said height bonuses are not super valuable in the current market. We hear that a lot, especially in suburban markets. Once you go past four or five stories in terms of a height bonus, um, it's, it bumps developers into a different construction type that's a lot more expensive and generally requires higher rents to manage to. So height bonuses were kind of like eh from developers, but density bonuses were desired. We certainly heard requests for process improvements. Developers always want things done faster and, and without any questions. Um, and so we certainly heard, hey, if you can get us through faster, that would be really helpful. And of course, financial incentives are always welcome as, uh, as well, particularly for affordable. Some developers said, look, we really want to understand better what the incentives are. I think there's, there's kind of a, a history and culture among developers in Longmont paying the fee in lieu and not worrying about anything else related to the units. And so they said, well, i- if, maybe if that was more clear, we better understood like exactly what we're getting out of incentives, then, then they may be more inclined to build those units. So that's what we heard from developers. The next step was to do that feasibility analysis. And that's the quantification of what's the value of these incentives? I do want to highlight, we can't quantify the value of all different types of incentives. So we really focused on the ones that are really quantifiable in, um, kind of in a pro forma context. And, and that is essentially looking at parking changes, looking at density bonuses, um, and looking at height bonuses. So we did a couple of different models which are detailed in that report. I'm not going to go into the weeds of the pro forma tonight. Uh, I will spare you all that pain. But broadly speaking, we kind of looked at what does it cost a developer if they pay a fee in lieu? What is it, what value do they get if they use the current incentive program? And then what value do they get if we give them maybe a bigger density bonus, a bigger, another height bonus, and then some additional parking reductions? So all of those are kind of quantified in the report itself. The results broadly show, look, your existing incentives are meaningful. Those are doing pretty much what they're supposed to. Uh, but there's a really, um, there'd be a pretty significant additional benefit of more parking reductions. So your current incentive just focuses on parking reductions for the affordable units. And we see a lot of communities adding parking reductions for the entire development if you build those affordable units. So we modeled that. You can see the results there. And then finally, we did kind of a, a full incentive program review. This lets us look at the things that are not quantifiable in the pro formas. It also lets us bring in input from planning staff and best practices. So I'm just going to walk us through at this point, kind of our recommendations on the things that we looked at. And then Molly's going to kind of recap where the city is on looking at some of those in a little bit more detail. So the first kind of chunk that I'll talk about altogether are the administrative improvements. So we're not talking about changing structure of what gets built. We're just talking about how the city processes those different, uh, those projects. And again, we're not talking about land use changes across the board. We are talking about specific incentives for, for developments that are bringing affordable units to the table. So first is fast track review. That just means put me at the top of the stack, move me through either at a guaranteed, um, number of days or move me through faster because I have affordable units and you want me. Um, so the city is actually already in process of that. That's part of Prop 123 compliance. Molly will, um, update you guys on that as well. The Public Process Requirements is specific to a subdivision plat of four lots. So right now, um, the subdivision plat of four lots has to go through, um, a, a public hearing process. It goes through kind of a whole site plan review process. And we're recommending, uh, that you would make that administrative if that subdivision is going to include, um, affordable units. We're also recommending streamlining ADU approval. This is the one recommendation that isn't tied to contractual affordable or income, uh, restricted affordable. But we do think, look, ADUs do offer that kind of naturally occurring affordable. And this is a way to make that process a little bit easier, um, without it having to go through, again, a site plan approval process. So next up are the more regulatory variances. So moving away from kind of that process stuff and into what specific changes can a developer make within their development plan, um, if they're including affordable units? The first one, and, uh, some of these are a bit in the weeds. So, um, I'll kind of, uh, give you the highlights. And then, you know, exactly how they might be implemented has more to do with kind of the code language and the rewrite. But this will give you kind of the concept of what we're looking at or what we found as some barriers that we think could be addressed. So one is the open space buffer. So right now, um, if there's, uh, housing right next to a park, you require a buffer of space in between those two different uses. Um, that's required generally between two different uses. So if you're going from, for example, residential to industrial, there's a buffer space. We're just suggesting, look, if the, if the adjacent use is open space or a park, eliminate the buffer if it's affordable housing. That just makes more efficient use of the land area in the parcel. Next is, um, is utility and access easement. So right now, we heard from developers and then also from planning staff a little bit that they're having some stringent separation of utilities and access requirements can make it really challenging to, to make good use of a parcel when it's a either unique or constrained parcel or a small parcel. So looking at some administrative ways to, to kind of, uh, think creatively about how to make everything fit properly on that lot when it's affordable housing being a little bit more flexible about how those things come together. Parking standards, I kind of hinted at this before. You're already offering some parking, uh, reductions for the affordable units. And in fact, the city's already relaxed parking requirements in general in those mixed-use districts. Um, but in other districts, parking standards are pretty high. In some cases, you have higher parking standards, uh, for a multifamily, for a multifamily unit than a single-family unit despite the fact that, that car load is not always quite the same or in proportion there. So our feasibility analysis looked at like a 33% parking reduction across the board in development. We felt like that has a really meaningful impact on projects. And we would recommend the city look at, um, an additional parking reduction for affordable projects that would take, that would, that would apply across the entire development, not just to the affordable units. Density and height bonuses, you already have some of those in place. We're just saying, look, keep them. We know height bonuses are probably not, um, going to work super well right now just given your market conditions, but they're a good thing to keep in place as the markets potentially shift. And then finally, um, kind of continuing these couple regulatory variances, these are the last two. Um, this high-density exemption is, is kind of a, a nuance that you don't see, um, that, that not everybody may be familiar with. But basically, right now, your Inclusionary Housing Ordinance exempts high-density developments in certain ways. So basically, it only applies, the inclusionary only applies to the first 20 dwelling units per acre. This was put in place some time ago and it was intended to kind of catalyze this higher-density development, which is more efficient, it's more sustainable, um, and it does create some affordability. However, um, the market is already there and we don't think the city needs to be catalyzing or incentivizing that at this stage in the market. And so we're recommending the city look at that exemption um, to make sure that you're getting the affordable units that you deserve. So right now, you're letting those high-density, um, developments kind of off the hook. For, for example, of potentially half their development or even more because you're only assessing that inclusionary on the first 20 units per acre. Um, so this table just kind of illustrates several of the projects that you all have had in Longmont that exceeded that 20 dwelling units per acre. And it shows kind of how many affordable units or inclusionary units they should have had to provide if there was no exemption, if the exemption was at a different threshold, so at 35 instead of 20, and then how many they actually were required to provide either through fees or through building them under the 20. And so you can see the difference there being, um, those seven projects generated either fees or units equivalent to about 68 affordable units. If that exemption was gone, that would have been 158 units. So you're losing an opportunity there and we think the market, um, doesn't need that additional boost at this stage. And then finally, is related just to mixed-use districts. So allowing more residential in mixed-use districts regardless of kind of that ratio of, uh, mixed use right now has to be, um, the, the district has to be 50% or more commercial. And we're suggesting waive that if it's affordable housing. So with that, um, I'll kind of give you the, the really quick recap. We talked about process-oriented incentives. Um, we talked about maintaining the current incentive packages that you have. Um, and then looking at opportunities, uh, for improving land use efficiencies through some of those buffer requirement changes in utility and access. Also looking at a parking incentive, um, and then eliminating or raising a threshold for that high-density exemption and allowing residential as a primary use. So that's the, the quick recap. I know I moved through that quickly. I'm going to hand back off to Molly so she can give you an idea of kind of where, where the city is, city staff is in looking at these and evaluating these as well, and then happy to take questions.
I'm sorry, we have a couple of people that are interested in asking questions at this point. Are we ready? Okay, Counselor, uh, Martin.
The, thank you, Mayor Peck. I have questions on slides four, five, and seven. Um, can you go back there? Okay, um, I was completely lost about what's being represented by this, um, stacked chart. Is it as it is now? Is it as it's supposed to be? Because, uh, it's hard for me to take anything away from this without having two pictures before and after.
Yep. No, that's a great point. And this is really just, um, the, this is just showing kind of the current typical cost breakdown of a four-story multifamily. Um, the reality is that it gets, it gets just like really detailed really fast when we start looking at those pro formas. So we didn't include the side-by-side here. All of the data are in the tables in the actual report. But you're right, this figure is mostly just showing kind of what the breakdown of costs is for a typical multifamily. Um, you can see here that parking is about 3% uh, total of the, the total development cost for a four-story multifamily. So reducing that parking, it, it may look like a fairly small proportion here, but it is one of the very few things that, that can change with land use and incentive-oriented things. So the city can't really incentivize or change the cost of land or commodities, construction costs and those sorts of things. But that parking is, is where you can get some whittle room.
Yes, and that was in, in fact, the very piece of the pie that I wanted to see. Because it seems to me by applying, uh, uh, the, the parking requirements to the, every unit, or parking requirement reduction to every unit, you get a big return.
Yes.
Uh, especially considering what a shortage of land we have.
Absolutely.
So that's, that, that understanding is correct. Okay, and then on the next slide, I hope I can remember what my, um, uh, streamline ADU approval. I, oh, I didn't understand what review process of a subdivision plat of four lots. Do you mean a subdivision plat of at least four lots? Or is plat of four some kind of a term of art? Because I just couldn't figure out what that actually meant.
Yeah, we may have to defer to your planning staff to make sure I don't butcher your code. But, so we'll let Glenn jump in on that one.
Uh, Mayor, Council, Councilmember Martin, you're right. It's, uh, uh, when you hit four units, you go into a preliminary plat stage, which you have a hearing before Planning Commission.
Okay, so it, yeah, it, it just meant of at least, it would be correct if you said at least four.
Right.
Okay, that's good.
Yep.
And now seven. Why wouldn't we? If the, if these, if these, especially the lot size reductions, um, are viable and workable, why don't we just apply those lot size reductions across the board? Rather than using it as an incentive?
Well, so it, on the, on the high-density exemption, yes, I think on lot sizes, yes, that's something that you could choose to apply across the board if you wanted to take a look at kind of zoning lot sizes in general. The high-density exemption that we're talking about has to do with how the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance applies. And we are suggesting, um, actually that that high-density exemption goes away or at least the threshold raises whether or not they're paying the fee or building the unit. So that's a really good, uh, clarification. This one is not actually tied to production of those units. It's just a shift in how the affordable units would be calculated, um, for all developments. So thanks for making that connection.
Maybe I can provide some history on how that came about. So when you all, when the council at the time, not you all, because many of you weren't on the council. When you were, when the council was developing the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, there was a lot of conversation regarding large multifamily units. And, you know, if, I think the conversation was, if you require us to do 12% on the total number of units, we're not going to be able to do the units. And so the council set the threshold at 20 to say, you have to do the 12% to say, you have to do the 12% on the 20 units per acre. And that was really part of the policy conversation. And I think where we are with the market, it's saying, eh, move it up, or don't do it, because you're losing out on units. But that was part of council's policy discussion when we were creating the original inclusionary housing ordinance.
Right, but units have gotten more expensive, and so, they can afford to build more affordable ones. That's the reason for waiving this? Is that the way the math works?
I would say, yes, the math works that way. These are scalable, and so, our assessment kind of finds that, yes, you can apply them across the board. And so, if it was just based on whether or not that type of development can afford to supply those units, we think the answer is, yes, they can.
Thank you.
In the same way that a smaller development could. So, we don't think there's anything different about that high density that would make it that much harder for them to do it.
Okay, Counselor McCoy.
Mayor Peck, Molly, can you go back to, I think it's Slide six? No, it's five, I guess. You were talking about streamlined ADU approval, and you would suggest that we leave it to city administrators to approve, rather than site plan approval. But when I was serving on planning zoning, when we looked at the Prospect neighborhood, we, right off the bat, started putting in ADUs as, Kiki presented that as a real option there. And that's what made that whole development such a unique thing throughout the United States. So, why would we need to get that, have that secondary, that, hey, kind of, you know, hey, we'd like to throw an ADU now on one of these units if we don't just, maybe at the very beginning, say, this is what we're looking for? If this is where we see we can make some positive changes, wouldn't it be better to just start off the bat saying, this is a possibility? Or is it strictly about the zoning and density of zoning that we are hesitant to do that? I don't know what the...
So, I might bring Glenn back for this. But generally, this was more of a process improvement that, right now, the ADUs to get approval requires a site plan, which adds about a month to the process. And so, this was more of just a process improvement that could help a naturally occurring affordable housing source be easier to do. It doesn't change anything about, and this recommendation doesn't change about where it's allowed, what type of zoning. It's just about process improvements.
Okay, but I thought we were talking about new development sort of thing. But we're, in part of this, where it's new, and part of it is, it is because you keep talking about the developer to the developer. So, that's why I think the folks out there in TV land might be a little confused, too.
Yeah, no, that's a great point. This is actually one of the only, or the only recommendation that doesn't apply specifically to new developments, but would be a broader application to ADUs in general.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor McCoy brought up a good point, though, that I hadn't even thought of. If a new development comes in, and they would be incentivized to put in an ADU along with that development, new development, could we incentivize them and make that process go faster? Or, it's something that we should think about, definitely.
So, as we reported back in July, I'm going to have Glenn take over in a minute, that we have Root onboard through March. And they, because we had some contract capacity in our grant, we asked them to do a mini-study on ADUs. And so, that is in the work. So, there's more to come on ADUs.
Okay.
Plus, the Affordable Housing Fund has provided, has created stock ADU plans. And the recommendations that Root would put together is going to feed into how do we incentivize the use of those stock plans? So, we have a couple of moving pieces on that to come for you. And then, I'll turn over to Glenn.
Mayor and Councils, so, Prospect was done with a planned area development. So, that allowed some special rules. So, if you talk about a new project, to change those rules, that's what you'd have to do. You'd have to do some overlay, which means then you potentially are going through a public hearing process on that versus amending the code to just change the process for an ADU across the board. And the site plan approval only applies if it's a detached ADU. You amended the code, I think, three years ago to say if it's in a basement, or it's in addition to the principal structure, it's administrative approval. So, this would really affect those detached ADUs. It would help speed those along.
Okay, and I understand that, thank you very much. What I'm suggesting is that we think further as we get new development in. And this would probably be two different processes for ADUs. One for a brand-new development, as we did in Prospect. And what we have now is the process for putting an ADU on an existing home lot, or, like you said, using a part of your existing house as an ADU.
I think the answer is, if council wanted to change the code, and let's say in single-family zoning, that says you can put an ADU as part of your use by right. And we found a way to incentivize that as part of the construction. So, it minimizes the process.
Correct.
But you have the incentives to encourage it. I think we can have that policy conversation with council, so you can look at adjusting the code, looking forward for property that's undeveloped today. And we can provide you with some options to look at that, because essentially, what you're saying is, how can we incentivize a new single-family project to include ADUs as part of the new development?
Right, incentivize the developer.
Correct.
Oh, I think we should do that. Thank you, and I think it's Molly of Donaldstown. Oh, yes, Counselor Crest.
So, I just have a couple of observations. One, the first one is complexity lowers efficiency, which I think came across in your report. And I noticed, when we look at these charts, that oftentimes, I'm talking about Page seven, which was Page 15 of our packet, that oftentimes, pay the fee and lieu costs the developer more than the other options. So, I think the complexity is driving that in that it's just easier to pay the fee and lieu and not deal with the complexity. And then, we've talked about the administrative improvements. I like the fast-track review, and then also the streamlined ADU. I want to say that there are neighborhoods, some of them are in my ward, that were built as duplexes, but were sold as single-family. And so, these would be attached ADUs. But one of the problems we've had in that, in those units, has been parking, parking restrictions, or parking requirements, I guess would be a better way to say it. But, so, that might be something that we need to figure out with things that are already existing. And just to birdwalk about parking, one of the things when we're building multifamily or high-density is if we put it in places where there aren't basic or essential services nearby, then, of course, cars are more required. So, just, I sometimes think in a macro way, and when we're talking about micro solutions. One of the other things you mentioned was utility waivers. And I know what's coming up is we're going to talk about the EV requirements. And I'm just wondering if that, the utility requirements there might help if we're going to lower parking. Maybe we could offer electric services for, say, electric bikes. That that might be helpful if you, to get to more essential services. So, just a thought. I know the Transportation Board is working on some of those issues also. All right, that's my bit. Thank you for the report.
Any further questions? Should I pick up with presentation?
Please do.
Okay, so, we kind of wanted to organize these recommendations, and there are a couple that staff is working on in one form or another, or trying to make progress on. First of all, on the fast-track review process, we have been, for several years, using affordable housing funds, about $20,000 per year, to pay for a planning facilitator role from a consulting firm that takes small affordable housing developers and helps them through our entitlement process. And I cannot stress how successful that has been. We have had some very small developers, such as the Inbetween, just go through with flying colors, frankly. It's been so successful. So, you are going to see in our action plan proposal for the 2024 funds that will come in the May or June timeframe, you'll see a proposal to maybe expand the scope of that for more of the larger affordable housing developers, because we think that they can all benefit. And then, how that plays into Prop 123, yes, a fast-track is required. We have several years still to sort out what that looks like. For us, this planning facilitator has been a really successful model. So, that may be something that we propose as a solution. But there are things in the work for that. Other ones already in progress, the utility and access easements. Staff is working on urban-based design standards that does focus on this as one of the issues. So, there is work in progress on that. And then, on the parking standards, I just want to, we're going to possibly circle back, because parking is going to come up in the next presentation as well. It's kind of all tied together. So, I just want to say that this is Root's independent third-party recommendation on this, and then, planning staff is going to come with some more specifics.
What I wanted to add to what Molly said in terms of the utility setbacks and things like that, that's actually what we're working through on the project that you all just approved in terms of the single-family homes. And that's really where we're testing how compact we can get, what we can do. But to Glenn's point and Councilmember McCoy's point, we're utilizing the same process that was utilized in Prospect, which is a PUD, because that's pushing us beyond what is in our existing code. That's also then informing some standards that we're going to bring to you in the very near future that allows us to replicate that in an easier way for other developments. Because when they say, when you're looking at, what's the setbacks for an electric utility line versus water line? What that starts doing is reducing the density that you can get, because you can't put as many homes on a property if you start having all these setbacks on top of each other. And, you know, to kind of go a little bit deeper, the project you all just approved, we, it's all electric.
Oh, good.
Why is it all electric? Because when you put a gas easement in the middle of the entire project, then that limits what you can do in terms of your electric and your water lines and your sewer lines. And so, for us, it was about being able to compress and also save money, because we estimated that that was probably a $1.5 million savings by not putting gas into the project, which then starts bringing your bottom line. So, I wanted you to know kind of what's going on and the fact that this project's really, we're dipping our toe to show, to prove that we can do it, so then others can hopefully replicate it.
Okay.
All right, so focusing on those where we would like some council direction, should staff return with proposals for either programs or code amendments regarding the following recommended incentives? So, the first one being the public process requirements, allowing administrative review for those subdivision of four or more lots if affordable units are included in the project. Would you like staff to come back with a proposal around this?
Counselor Martin?
I just want to make sure once more that I understand that. You're saying allowing administrative review to be sufficient as opposed to requiring additional review steps? And yes, I would like to say, I think this would be a wonderful step, and it would leave us with more bandwidth for fast-tracking things.
So, I think it might be easier if we just go through this and then make a motion for the slate of them. So, you did the public process requirements. That's what I was just going to. So, if we could just get a yea or nay on, if you don't think this is a good idea, let me know. If we should just get a yea or nay on them one by one, and then do make a motion for the whole thing? Or do you want to make motions for each one?
I think we need to lower the complexity in terms of gaining efficiencies.
In my opinion, we need to lower the complexity in order to get greater efficiency. So, I think we should have a more focused approach.
Do you want to go through them one by one?
Yeah, I think there are too many items here.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to make a motion, then?
Well, I...
No, I was talking, I'm sorry, Counselor Martin, since she brought that up.
Yes, I thought we'd have more discussion than that. But if we're trying to minimize discussion, I move approval of bullet number one.
Okay.
Second.
Right, Counselor Martin made the motion to approve public process requirements, seconded by Counselor Hidalgo Ferring. Is there any discussion on this? Counselor Crest?
Unfortunately, this is the one that I don't like.
Okay.
Counselor Martin. And I'll tell you why, because we've had a lot of commentary from neighborhoods in regards to compatibility with their neighborhood. And, you know, these are large plats, and I, although that might make it more efficient, I think that we need to continue to have the public involved in their neighborhoods, especially when there's something very new happening there and in a large scale. So, I'm not supportive of that particular item.
Any other comments? Seeing none, let's vote. Arg. I am going to be a no, because I know it's going to be more efficient, but I think it's going to cause a lot of public outcry.
Mayor, may I make a clarification?
This is, the recommendation is to streamline this process if affordable units are included in the project, not necessarily across the board for every development.
Oh, if there's only four lots in the whole development? See, this is what I don't understand, Molly.
Glenn, do you mind clarifying the subdivision piece? And then, I'll clarify the affordable units.
Right, so you go into a public subdivision process if you have four units or greater, four lots or greater.
Okay.
So, what this is saying, if that, if you're doing your 12% affordable units, it would be an administrative or a staff process.
And the recommendation is specifically if there are affordable units included.
Okay, I'm trying to get back to the screen here. Oh, here we go. So, yeah, I still am going to vote against this. So, that passes five to two with five, with myself and Counselor Crest imposing.
Okay.
Now, it's the streamlining, the ADU approval.
So, this, just to recap, currently, they require site plan approval, which adds about a month of review in order to encourage production of ADUs as a naturally occurring affordable product. The recommendation is to allow for administrative approval. And as Glenn clarified earlier, that really is about detached ADUs, attached ADUs already have an administrative approval. The, yeah, definitely. Right here. Streamline ADU, or the one with the check marks?
Check marks.
Counselor Crest?
I thought this meant just attached ADUs. So, I think there needs to be a little bit more review for detached ADUs. So, I was originally for it, but now... So I was originally for it, but now I'm not. Any other discussion or?
Just make the motion.
I, I'm a little concerned about residents' feedback feeling like they didn't know something was going on with detached, with, in home, where they're like, you know, your second story or your basement is being used. I don't think it's nearly, it's not going to impact the average person as much as the, as having something that feels like it's a separate house. And I'm concerned that people would, or if somebody decides to redesign their garage, their separate garage, and add a mother-in-law's roost, as they kind of refer to them as, that there might be some sort of feeling that, that we, that we left this to, you know, some city staff to decide on. So I'm kind of debating where I'm at with this.
Thank you, Mayor Peck. I move that we approve the streamlining of the ADU as presented.
So streamline, the motion to streamline ADU approval as presented was made by Counselor Rodriguez, seconded by Counselor Martin. Any more discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes with Counselor Crest and Counselor McCoy in opposition, opposing. Five to two.
Okay, so that is a code change, correct, Glenn? So that would be coming back as an ordinance? Okay, next on our list is open space variance. So this is one that gets a little planning technical. But this is where currently a buffer, if a change in use is, so if we're doing residential next to a park, for instance, a buffer is required. And so the recommendation is to, is it reduce or remove? Let's see. Right, should we look at the impacts of reducing or removing the buffer requirement for affordable housing developments? I should say developments that include affordable housing units.
Counselor Martin?
Yeah, I really do have some questions before I can make any motion here, because I would like to understand what the buffer would consist of in this case. You know, we had a buffer between a commercial area like downtown and a residential area like the historic East Side, and it had to do with building heights and stuff and the distance between the last, the last commercial street and the, and the beginning of the first residential yard, I think it was. I may be misstating that because it's been several years. But anyway, a buffer between a park and a residential area is, consists of what? More park, right? I mean, what would it mean?
That's what it looks like. But it would be under the developer's responsibility to maintain and basically not use.
Ah, so it increases costs for development and then therefore increases the price of the housing?
Correct.
Okay, then I move that we eliminate the open space variance.
Well, before we discuss it, we need a second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Counselor Martin that we remove the open space variance and seconded by Counselor Rodriguez. It's open for discussion. Counselor Crest?
I have a question. If we reduce the buffer, does that mean that there would be less landscaping and therefore less water use on those properties?
If there's less plant material, there certainly would be. A lot of times, if you reduce the buffer, you try and keep the plant material there. It's just squeezing in a little tighter space. So in that case, it'd probably be the same amount of water that's being used. But I think we're just trying to save that area. So I think, of course, you're going to see all the gory details when we bring it back in ordinance, but I think that's something we have to work out. Does it make sense we reduce the area? Can we reduce the plant material? Or do you keep the plant material and you really still have the physical buffer? You just don't have the large area and the additional setback.
There has been some concern about HOAs and also cost of maintaining landscaping. So if there could be a savings there, I think it would add to affordability. Just throwing that out.
Yeah.
Counselor Hidalgo Ferring?
So my question, and can you go back to the slide, I think that told a little more about the open space variance? I can't remember what slide it was. So the notion of open, so I think about, I guess my concern lies near the river corridor. So looking at that buffer space, you know, that was one that went to debate when, looking at the Rivertown property. And, you know, there was some negotiation around, you know, I don't think, I'm trying to remember. It wasn't increasing the buffer, but it was, you know, just really securing around, near, you know, just more sensitive land. So that was kind of my concern. I'm less concerned about the parks piece, but I just wanted a little more feedback on, you know, the impacts to the open space, especially along the river corridor.
Good point, council member. We did not intend to reduce the riparian setback with this. That would not be part of this buffer reduction. It's just the buffer we require between different uses and between uses and parks.
Okay, okay.
And if you want to exclude that, we're totally fine.
Okay, and I do see that open space is not capitalized, so it's really just undeveloped land, and that's a different zoning. Am I understanding this correctly?
I think so.
Okay, very good. Okay, thank you.
So my question is, does a buffer have to be plant material? Does it have to be bushes or trees? Couldn't it be a fence? Couldn't it be, because it's nothing more than a separation, is it not?
That's right. We define them with plant material to get kind of that landscape, and we don't typically require a fence. So yes, a fence does kind of the same thing. It provides that visual separation.
Because I have been in developments where they've been on golf courses or on trails, and the buffer was actually on the property of the owner, not on the property of the city. So the city wouldn't be responsible for maintaining it. But I do believe we need a buffer, but it doesn't, I guess I don't want to just remove it when there are probably other things to delineate that separation.
Yeah. Well, again, we can bring back some alternatives for you two.
That would be great.
It's just kind of given us direction to look at this.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, this is just saying, bring stuff, bring information back. We didn't want to work on something that you didn't want to see. So you will get options as we bring this back to you.
Perfect. Seeing no one else in the queue, let's vote. And that passes unanimously. Yay, we have one.
All right, going back to our list. Next is density and height bonuses. So the recommendation was to keep our density and height bonuses and if it is possible to increase the density bonus as well. So the question would here would be, would you be interested in seeing proposals for increasing the density bonus?
I move that we look at proposals for increasing the density bonus.
Can I second?
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. That was made by myself and seconded by Counselor Hidalgo Ferring. And that carries six to one with Counselor Crest opposing.
So I'm going to go back for high-density exemption. I'm going to go back to the explanation, since this is one of our more complicated ones. So the recommendation is to definitely include, well, I should say to either raise or eliminate the exemption here. So as you can see in the example, that would mean that we are requiring more affordable units as part of IH for higher-density projects, lower-density projects. Thank you.
So I do have a concern about this. And my concern is where are these high-density projects going to be located? If it is infill in a neighborhood, that might be a problem.
So just the example projects here, project one through seven, those were actual projects that went through our process.
But I don't know where those are.
And just to clarify, we're not suggesting changing the density or the zoning where these would go. We're just saying if a high-density project is entitled to go in and there's one being built, we're recommending that you apply the same inclusionary housing requirements to that project as you would a lower-density project. Right now, high-density projects, even where they're zoned currently, are not fulfilling the same inclusionary housing ordinance as other developments in the city because you're exempting all of the density that they bring above and beyond that. So we're not changing zoning. We're not saying you can build higher-density projects anywhere else than they're already entitled. We're just saying apply the full weight of the inclusionary housing ordinance to those projects just as you would in any other project.
Great, and as a reminder to council and especially to our new councilperson, when you bring that back, could you bring back where they were zoned?
Sure.
Originally?
Right, and really anything over 25 units per acre are in our major corridors downtown. So where you have a mixed-use district.
Okay, thank you.
And there's no cap.
Okay.
I think the question on this one, for you council to get clear direction on, is do you want us to look at eliminating the 12% for the first 20 units per acre? Or do you want us to look at bringing back, you know, the 12% to the first 35 units per acre? There's two choices for you on what you want us to bring back.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor Peck. I would move that you bring back definitely eliminating the 20 and give us options, while I would prefer no exemption. There might be council members who would prefer just a higher threshold on the exemption. So that would be my motion.
You want to exempt the 20?
No, eliminate the 20.
Eliminate the 20.
Either go a higher threshold or no exemption at all.
Okay, thank you. So that was made by Counselor Rodriguez, seconded by Counselor Martin. Seeing no one else in the queue to discuss, let's vote. And that passes unanimously.
All right, and our final question of the night on this one is primary use in mixed-use districts. So the recommendation is to allow multifamily residential in mixed-use districts either by right or as a condition of including onsite affordable units.
Seeing no one in the queue. Were you going to be in the queue?
No, I'll go ahead.
Okay.
So I move to bring the change, the primary use in mixed-use districts to bring it back for discussion and adoption if we decide.
Second. So Counselor Hidalgo Ferring moved to bring back mixed-use review?
Primary use.
Primary use. And who seconded that? Did I? I seconded that. Oh, my gosh. Any discussion, Counselor Martin?
Yes, I just want to clarify that motion. It sounds like your motion does not decide whether you want to move the threshold or not. You just want it to come back for further discussion and a motion at that time?
No, I guess to bring it back for approval based on the recommendation.
Okay, well, so the recommendation, there were two possible recommendations. One is to, oh, go ahead. One is, one is to always allow multifamily in mixed-use. And the, and the other is to allow multifamily only if they have onsite affordable. So which did, which did you want, right?
Can I interrupt for a second? Molly, would you explain that, please, so that we all understand what ideas we're voting on?
Sure. So, right now, in mixed-use districts, residential is a secondary use. And so it's limited, you can only do so much. So this would allow, either if you do it by right, that would allow residential in mixed-use districts. And then if it's for affordable projects that include affordable housing only, then those would be allowed in mixed-use districts. I might have Glenn help me with the technicalities on this one as well.
Yeah, go ahead, Glenn.
Cross over into complex planning.
So all we talk about in mixed-use is primary uses, and that could be industrial, commercial, but then you allow residential as secondary. So staff has said, oh, well, secondary uses is no greater than 49% of that land use area. So I think what we're recommending here is let's look at that and as incentive for more affordable housing, perhaps you can go a higher percentage as a secondary use in those mixed-use districts.
Higher than 50%?
Yes.
And just as clarification, for me, a secondary use means we are, that's not mandated by the city? It is if the developer would like to put in residential, they may.
Correct.
Okay. Counselor Crest?
Thanks for clarifying. Because I was concerned that we would lose commercial in those areas. I think it's important to have more essential services. It would be helpful to have commercial with housing mixed, so.
Okay. Counselor Hidalgo Ferring?
So personally, I would like to see it only as a condition of including onsite affordable units since our goal is to elevate the number of affordable units we're providing for our residents. But, you know, I guess I would like to hear from others as well. And, you know, as for visual, I'm going back to the area by Sunset and Boston. I think we were looking at, a few years ago, we were looking at the secondary use. But at that time, we were discussing not just the one property, but looking at the zone, you know, the whole area as one. So how would this impact?
Right, yes.
That debate.
I think you're thinking of the Riverside or Rivertown project. And we look at the district as not just the property, but the larger area divided by major arterials or other zone districts, basically. So that's what our population is, I guess, for that area. So it is a larger area, and it will take some thinking. And we can bring back kind of how we would apply it.
Okay, okay. So, I mean, I would move to accept it as a condition of onsite affordable units. But debate me.
Debate me.
Debate me.
Counselor Martin?
Well, process-wise, I'm a little confused. Was that a motion or was it not?
It was.
All right, then we can't debate until somebody seconds.
Yeah, we already have a motion on the table.
Oh, okay, all right, so that you were clarifying the intent of the motion already on the table.
So the motion on the table is to approve affordable housing incentives, review primary use in mixed-use. So we need to vote on that.
I would have preferred allowing it in all cases because fee and lieu is good, too. And so, you know, we would like residential uses. I think in every case of commercial and residential mixed-use that, you know, as long as the commercial use is not toxic and difficult, and we really don't allow very many of those in Longmont at all anymore. So I would have preferred that we did it for all residential, as long as they comply with the ordinance and don't have to have use onsite. So as a point of commercial clarification, procedural clarification, sorry, if this is voted down, we have an opportunity to make a second motion for the other way? Or is this our last chance to move it? And if this is voted down, then it doesn't get brought back at all? Or you make, you look like you don't understand.
No, no, I think you can make a secondary motion.
Mayor and Council, Eugene May, as long as it's a different motion, you can keep going.
All right. Fair enough. Thank you.
Councilor Hidalgo Ferring.
So I was trying to answer the question and make less work for you all. But according to what's written up here, it's really just to approve Affordable Housing Incentives Review for Primary Use in Mixed Use. So we can actually discuss both items. Is that correct? Is that what you're asking us?
Incentives review. So what we're asking here is-
I'm just looking at what my screen, what popped up.
What we're asking here is, do you want us to bring back either options or a specific proposal for allowing more residential in mixed-use zones?
So let's just bring it back to allow for more residential in mixed-use. Let's just make it easier.
Show options.
And that is what this motion allows you to do?
Yes.
Great. Let's vote. Thank you for the discussion.
Yeah, Mayor, Council, I will say, and related to the work that we've got going on, and when we talk about council's priorities and we look at core services, those issues, this is definitely associated with housing. So I will use this as an opportunity that this is a fair amount of work that we're assuming as part of one of your main pillars, which is housing. So as we're thinking about other things, I think it's important to realize this is going to be a pretty heavy lift, of which we think is important, but just put it in perspective with other things that may or may not come up.
Thank you for your work, Molly and Molly.
Thank you.
We are now on Study Session Item B, Amendments to Section 15.05.080, Off-Street Parking, Stacking and Loading, and Section 15.10, Definitions of the Longmont Municipal Code to Incorporate State-Mandated Electric Vehicle Charging Infrastructure in All New Developments Approved After March 1, 2024. So we have Ben Ortiz going to kick this off.
Yes, thank you. Oh, my apologies. My name is Ben Ortiz. I'm a transportation planner in Planning and Development Services. I'm accompanied by Zach Blazek, and he's the city's environmental sustainability planner. So city staff is proposing amendments to Chapter 15.05.080, which is the parking, stacking, and loading section of the Land Development Code, as well as Chapter 15.10, which is the definitions of the Longmont Municipal Code. And the reason why we're doing this is due to House Bill 23-1233, which mandates EV infrastructure in all new developments. And so, as I mentioned, the House bill requires municipalities to incorporate electric vehicle charging infrastructure into new developments and redevelopments for projects that don't have an approved site plan or development plan prior to March 1 of this year. And so the intent of the legislation is to meet Colorado's greenhouse reduction targets. So the electric vehicle, the electric vehicle infrastructure requirements are broken down by both residential uses and then commercial uses. So the amount of EV infrastructure for the residential uses, it depends on the type of residential and the amount of overall parking, motor vehicle parking that's provided on the site. So this slide here shows that 1 and 2-family dwellings and townhomes would be required to provide 1 EV-ready space per dwelling unit, whereas multifamily developments require four different levels of EV parking infrastructure based on the total number of parking spaces installed in the development. And so each level of EV parking infrastructure is categorized and defined in state law and are identified as EV-installed, EV-ready, EV-capable, and then EV-capable-light. Now, just as a side note, the city of Longmont, we've already partially implemented the state requirement with amendments to the building codes. Back in 2021, the Building Department amended the International Residential Code to require EV-ready electrical outlets at 1 and 2-family dwellings, townhomes, and tiny homes. So this slide shows the EV infrastructure categories along with their definitions. Staff is proposing to incorporate these definitions into Chapter 15.10. And so just specifically, the four categories I had mentioned previously, but the category requiring the least amount of EV infrastructure is the electric-vehicle-capable-light category, which is a space that would include conduit or a raceway installed to support future implementation of EV charging installation. The next category up is electric-vehicle-capable-space, which includes the infrastructure of an EV-capable-light space along with electric panel, electric panel capacity. And the third category is electric-vehicle-ready-space, which includes everything provided in an EV-capable space along with circuit over-protection devices. And then finally, an electric-vehicle-installed space, which includes all the necessary electrical infrastructure to facilitate charging in, charging of an electric vehicle. And so that is my presentation, short and sweet. We're proposing to bring this back in an ordinance on February 13 for first reading. And with that, Zach and I would be happy to answer any of your questions. We also have representatives from LPC and the Building Department to assist with technical questions. And so with that, I'd like to, I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Counselor Martin.
Thank you, Mayor Peck. I'm getting outside the line just a little bit, but when we begin using EV charging as, and even maybe in some future world, vehicle-to-grid, but even EV charging, as a way of shifting demand or shifting supply of electricity based on the supply of renewable energy at a given time, then it seems to be more important that the EV charging capability would exist at commercial sites where people would be parked during the day, because it's much more important to charge when it's sunny than it is to charge in the middle of the night when the renewables generation is not as effective. The sun's not shining, in other words. So why is, I mean, I understand the state law, which is silent on the subject I've just raised, but just because we're following the state law doesn't mean we can't go beyond it. Would it not be appropriate to also create requirements for commercial buildings?
Mayor Peck, Councilmember Martin, my apologies. Yes, this particular law, it does encompass commercial developments as well. And so that, so if we go back, let's see, if I can go back to this slide here. So if you look at this particular table, what you'll see is the top category are commercial uses and the amount of parking that would be provided. And so there's basically two categories. So a new commercial development, that's either 10 or less parking spaces, or a commercial development that includes more than 10 parking spaces. And so, for example, in the top category of 10 or less parking spaces, you'll find that what is required would be 2 EV-ready spaces. And so that's that category that's just beneath the EV-installed. So all they've got to do is they take the charging unit and they plug it in, and then it's ready to go. But it does encompass commercials, new commercial development as well. And I'm sorry I didn't make that clear.
Seeing no other discussion, the options are direct staff to bring back an ordinance incorporating the required changes to Longmont Municipal Code, or do not direct staff to bring back an ordinance. Can I have a motion?
I move.
Counselor McCoy.
I move option 1, direct staff to bring back an ordinance incorporating required changes to Longmont Municipal Code.
Second.
So Counselor McCoy made the recommended, the motion to have staff bring back the ordinance incorporating the changes, and that was seconded by Counselor Martin.
Hidalgo Ferring.
Hidalgo Ferring. I heard both of you. So no discussion in the queue, so let's vote. Thank you. Thank you, Ben. Phil.
Thank you.
And you?
Zach.
Zach.
And you.
Thank you. We are now at Study Session Item C, which is the 2024 legislative bills recommended for City Council position.
Hello, Mayor Peck and members of council. Sandy Cedar, Assistant City Manager. We have three bills for your consideration today. Happy to go through them, discuss them, go through in any order or however the council would like to move forward.
I think let's just do them in the order that you have presented them to us.
That's good. Mayor, the first bill is House Bill 24-1016, Concerning Emergency Communication Services. Basically, what this is doing is allowing for our dispatch folks to provide training using the 911 fees that are collected, to be able to use that for training, as well as for other things that are used for dispatch officers. So it also defines what an emergency communications person is. It's always helpful to know that. But really, what we're looking for is to be able to use those dollars that are collected for training of that staff. So the staff suggests that City Council support House Bill 1016.
This looks like a good bill. Can I have a motion? Counselor Hidalgo Ferring.
So I move we support HB 24-1016.
It's moved by Counselor Hidalgo Ferring, seconded by Counselor McCoy. Let's vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. The next bill is House Bill 1090, Concerning the Release of Identifying Information in Criminal Justice Records. So, subject to limited exceptions, current law requires that victims' names and identifying information is redacted from information that is released. What this bill would do is actually allow that to be unredacted, particularly for district attorneys and a very small sliver of people. Our public safety, our police chief, really felt like that could do a disservice to those victims and really put some undue pressure, because those folks that are doing that investigations can get that information at the right time. This would kind of get it to them ahead of time. And so in his mind, that really felt like that was a disservice to the victims of these crimes. And so the staff suggests that the City Council oppose House Bill 1090.
Counselor Krist.
I move that we oppose House Bill 24-1090.
Second.
That was moved by Counselor Chris, seconded by Counselor Martin. Seeing no one in the queue to discuss, let's vote. Carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. The last one is House Bill 24-1152, Concerning the Increasing the Number of Accessory Dwelling Units. This is the one that several folks from Public Invited to Be Heard also spoke on. I believe that the council's position on ADUs is that we want to encourage them, we want for our local codes to support those. I believe you have some changes that will be coming back to you in the next few weeks. However, the state telling us how to do that does seem like an overreach and a preemption of local control. I certainly understand and appreciate the perspective that the public was able to discuss with you during that public invited to be heard. From our perspective, however, this is a matter of local concern, and things like parking regulations and other types of things that you may want to see specifically in our code then would be preempted by the state. So the staff suggests that the City Council oppose House Bill 1152.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Martin.
Yes, City Manager Cedar would be correct if not for one aspect of this bill. And that is that the bill removes the ability, it voids any restrictions by homeowners' associations, PUDs, and other associations that manage an area of property from having, it voids any covenants that they may have that prohibit ADUs in the area that they manage. And that one prohibition is so important to the city of Longmont that I think that we should approve, we should support this state law's change, because otherwise, I tried to do the math, there's just not enough maps online in terms of the total number of households today that are in HOAs versus not, but it's at least half of our single-family neighborhoods are in HOAs, or homes are in HOAs. I'm happy to admit that I'm wrong if my estimate is high, but I don't think it is. And I really scrutinize the rest of the bill, and it seems to me that they have bent over backwards to avoid stepping on local control, as long as local control is, doesn't mean some draconian thing like having, you know, triple the setbacks for an ADU for any other outbuilding and stuff like that. So I actually believe that the bill was written to avoid the local control argument. And this bill would be so good for Longmont, especially since we're using fee waivers a lot. And this bill, you know, has a way for us to get reimbursed for the fee waivers, and it's us, the city, getting reimbursed, you know? So that's a very valuable feature of the bill as well. So I move that the council supports AB, HB 24-1152.
I'll second that.
Counselor Martin moved to support HB 1072, and it was seconded by Counselor, I said that wrong, didn't I?
1152.
1152. And that was seconded by Counselor Hidalgo Ferring. Is there any discussion? Counselor McCoy.
Thank you, Mayor Peck. To Councilmember Martin's point, maybe Glenn or somebody else can bring up, can discuss this or, you know, clear this up. If we are concerned about our home rule status and everything, what, can't we decide whether we want to pursue this and impose this on- we want to pursue this and impose this on those, what is it, homeowners associations without the state's approval? And if we?
Yeah, I don't believe you can. I think I said.
No, it'll require the state to make those adjustments to HOAs.
And, you know, I think the thing that's compelling about this is that certainly compared to last year's bills, this is, you know, leaps and bounds ahead of where these bills were last year with respect to housing and partnering with local governments. CML's position is oppose unless amended, to remove the preemptive language but keep everything else in, because I think, I think Councilmember is correct. I think that this is furthering things, and it's the words "the use by right" that starts to create issues amongst our code. So I don't. Do you want to add to that?
That's what kind of drives me. I feel like CML has really looked at all the aspects, and I think I'd prefer to have them come back with a better bill that includes that language than to just prove anything, because this is not the idea of, you know, throwing something at the wall and see if it sticks. It's really about the, what's best for our community.
I do believe the incentives are things that this council has agreed with, and certainly the HOA's discussion is something that this council has agreed with. It's always the devils in the details.
Counselor Crist.
So I'm in favor of inclusionary housing and ADUs. However, I have to remark that extra regulation usually affects cost, usually increases cost, and government moves slowly. So I would rather keep it local, and I would rather keep it with this council. I've also asked that we review the purpose of HOAs in our developments. So I think that's a better approach for us than to accept legislation at the state level. So I'm opposing this.
So my question is, we already allow ADUs in our city, and we only want the ADU to be a rental and the primary owner to live in the main house. My fear of this use by right is that we would have investors buying the properties and both of them become rentals. We don't know how many in a neighborhood would do that, but, you know, there is a trend that investors are going to come in and buy up even new developments, and that changes the whole flavor of our city, the whole flavor of it. And I think there would be a huge pushback when we talk about keeping our community as a community and not as a rental business in our neighborhoods. So I like our ADU. We can expand it, but I do not want both units to be rentals. So I'm going to oppose it as well. Counselor Hidalgo Ferring.
You meant to call on Susie, but you didn't.
Oh, I'm sorry. Me. I'm sorry.
Light is still green, however, so I'm not.
Oh, there we go. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. So, you know, you do bring up a good point in that. However, you know, I think about, there were some things in here that we cannot do unless the state, you know, creates law that allows that. So, for example, the ADUs and HOAs. And, you know, as, you know, all newer housing is under HOA. We have several HOAs that we can't really do a whole lot with, and we have residents who are concerned. This is their property. There are things that they want to be able to do within their property, and they're constricted with HOAs. And there is minimal options for folks who, to move away from, you know, who don't want to live in HOAs. So, you know, they're kind of stuck with those regulatory. So I believe that that addresses that piece. You know, and I've been in ongoing conversations with Representative Amable throughout, you know, looking at affordable housing, what are the steps? I know that they were very cognizant, she is one of the sponsors of the bill, very cognizant to address, you know, some of the needs and concerns that we have had. You know, I think for us as Longmont, this policy aligns with what our priorities are. So I think, you know, for us and what we're looking for, this is something I do approve because it is in line with our standards. You know, CML was very, you know, I just, I didn't see a lot. I mean, I understand, you know, removing the preemption, and that's, you know, that's a component. I mean, of course, you know, that's something we can with, discuss with the sponsors and really advocate for that piece. But I'd really hate to throw out the whole thing over a piece that we can, as councilmembers, speak with our legislators and really lobby to have them revise as it makes its way through committee.
So that was a good point, and I'll call on you in just a second, Counselor Martin. Can we oppose with our amendments?
Absolutely, Mayor Peck. And you can certainly say support if amended, you could say oppose if, you know, unless amended, any of those, any of that kind of position, the city council is welcome to take. And I'm happy to make sure that our legislators understand the discussion and where you agree with the bill and which areas you don't.
Okay.
CML specifically does cite your concern about owner occupancy and parking restrictions as something that would be kind of out the window if this, if this did pass. And so that is one of the examples that CML is using. We could certainly use those examples as well as part of the amendment process if you choose.
And I'm curious as to what the other municipalities are going to be saying. So Counselor Martin.
Yes, I did want to point out that, to Councilmember Crist's point, that the bill is written to remove administrative complexity, not create it. So I don't think that that's a good reason for opposing it. The only reason that I could say, you know, that where it preempts something that's a specific policy of Longmont is our restrictions about owners and renting. And I seem to recall that at our last retreat, we had a resident make the point about the financial hardship that those restrictions place on him, and it was the consensus of the council that, yeah, we should probably relax that. And he's been asking about every couple months, where's my ordinance? And now we're coming up to our whole retreat, and we still haven't done anything about it. So my way of thinking is that we should support the state ordinances, and it takes a thorny problem off our back. And that's why I would prefer an unqualified support.
Counselor Martin, if my memory, we may be talking about two different people, but the person that I remember at that retreat wanted ADUs to be used as STRs, short-term rentals, not ADUs.
Yeah, I think, well, yeah, he wanted to build ADUs, and he wanted to be able to rent them any way he wanted to.
Yeah, that's a different discussion.
Okay. And the law does allow you to restrict short-term rentals, by the way.
Mm-hmm.
Even the proposal, but yes.
Counselor McCoy.
Thank you, Mayor Peck. I feel that I'd love to support this, but I feel that it really needs to be opposed with amendments that we're talking about here. And then that way, they kind of get an understanding that, you know, this is, this is where our community is coming from. It's not that we're against ADUs. No one, I don't really think, is truly against having people have a little bit of something else going on for them, especially after COVID and the hard times that that faced. But the really, real issue is, is just making sure it's not turned into, you know, rental upon rental. And that's why I'm going to be against it, because I really want this motion. Now, if we would come back with oppose with amendments, we can do that.
Well, let's vote. You can make that mess.
I will.
Okay, let's vote.
Sorry, what was the motion? I think I missed it. To support. Okay. That was Councilmember Martin's motion. Thank you.
To support.
To support. Right, Crystal? Yeah, to support.
So that passes four to three with myself, Counselor McCoy, and Counselor Crist in opposition. I would have brought it back with support with amendments. But, thanks, Mayor. So that is it for the agenda. The important part is coming up, though. Mayor and council comments. Counselor McCoy.
Thank you, Mayor Peck. I had a community member contact me and ask me, they seem to feel that there is something else going on at Bond Farm, that it might be going up for sale, and they were concerned that then something would change there. Is that, do we have any feedback on that?
So last Friday, I was made aware of that there is a for-sale sign on that. What I can tell you is that we are looking into what prompted that, and I've had several emails with staff. I think when you look at what was approved, and I've had a couple of conversations with council members, councils approved, this is what's going to occur on that site. So if they were to sell it, then whomever purchased it would still have to build what council approved. If they didn't want to build what council approved, they would have to go back through the process all over again. But in talking to staff about maybe what prompted it, we're looking at some of the comments that were related to that, and I will have more information on that hopefully later this week, so we can give council that information. But in general, Eugene and I kind of talked about this earlier, what's approved is approved, and they have to build according to that. They can't come back and sell it and then do something different without re-engaging in the entire process all over again.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Martin.
Thank you, Mayor Peck. I have something to add about that, and also just something to add in general. It appears that what prompted the for-sale sign was the planning staff adding additional requirements after the council approval. And so I would like to understand whether that is allowed for the planning staff to do, because this is not a matter of where the sprinkler systems go. You know, this is, would be a big deal that would add cost to, and I don't want to get into the details, but it's a big enough deal that it would add cost to the developer. And I might have put that for-sale sign out myself. So is that allowed?
That is the very issue that I'm looking into, and I will have more information for you all on that. And I've had information coming to me, and I have a meeting. I've asked Erica to schedule a meeting with me tomorrow to go over those very issues.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. The other thing that I would just like to say, you know, for future consideration, and I want to be, to observe the staff's warning plea, you know, explanation that keeping the core services running needs to be our essential focus. So that said, it seems to me that there are ways, and I've discussed with several of the directors and above, this idea that there are mechanisms that the city could impose to prevent non-owner occupancy, to disincentivize non-owner occupancy, and that would not involve, well, that would be legal, I guess, is what I want to say, you know, as opposed to having an ordinance that says corporations can't buy these houses, which is not legal. And I hope that we will be able to, at some point, maybe later in the year, like in the second half of the year, discuss some of those ideas, because I think that they would be benefits for existing homeowners, for our electrification policy, as well as keeping corporate investors out of Longmont, or at least making Longmont much less attractive to corporate investors. So I just want to get on the record as having said that, because I think there are things that we could do that would be a win-win lose for corporate investors.
Counselor Crist.
Well, I also hear staff saying that it's a heavy lift, the things that we asked them to bring back. And I just want to make another plea for staying focused, to promote efficiency, you know, maybe focus on two items of incentives that could be useful. Also, when it comes to de-incentivizing things, I think extra regulation is another heavy lift, and that we should really more look at incentivizing ADUs in ways that we would like to see them used. So those are my comments.
I want to say that I was, for the people in our city who are interested in a food tax, I was happy to read in the New York Times this weekend that the federal government is looking into the price gouging on food that is happening around our nation, especially after the pandemic. So they say that the, that we, a lot of price gouging in supermarkets has been going on, which raises the price of our food. So, thank you. Do we have any comments from our city manager?
No comments, Mayor and council.
City attorney.
No comments, Mayor.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm not going to ask opposed, Aaron. We are adjourned. Thank everybody for your input.